This evening, Council is appreciative to have Rupee Trivedi, leader of the Hindu temple Bapsh Minder to pray with us this evening. Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you for giving the opportunity. Thank you so much, all of you. Sri Swami Narayan Bhagwan Nijay Akshar Pushtam Maharaja Nijay Pramukh Swami Maharaja Nijay Mahand Swami Maharaja Nijay Atha Shanti Paathah Hari Om Dyo Shanti Antareksha Gom Shantihe Prathavi Shantihe Rapa Shanti Ro Kadayah Shantihi Vanaspataya Shanti Rishvadevaaha Shanti Brahma Shantihe Sarva Gom Shantihe Shanti Reva Shantihe Shama Shanti Redi Om Shanti Shanti Shantihi Om Sahna Vavatu Sahnav Bhunaktu Sahaviriam Karvavahe Tejasvinavaditamastu Maavit Vishavahe Om Shanti Shanti Shantihi Om Assatoma Sadgamaya Tamso Ma Jotirgamaya Mruttyurma Amrutamgamaya Om Shanti 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 Shushanti Rabhavatu
Unto the heaven be peace, unto the sky and the earth be peace. Peace be unto the water, unto the herbs and trees be peace. Unto the gods be peace, unto Brahma and unto all be peace. And may we realize that peace, Om, peace, peace, peace. Lead us from the unreal to the real, lead us from the darkness to the light, lead us from death to immortality, Om, peace, peace, peace. Om, may the guru and the disciple be paved on the path of study together. Together, the guru and disciple enjoy studies. Together, the guru and disciple should do the work of study with deep concentration. Let us, what we study, be full of genius, may it not give rise to anonymity because of ignorance. Om, Shanti, Shanti, Shanti.
Thank you so much. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla Brown, Dorance, Remi, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to spin for the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla Brown, Dorance, Remi, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be received?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will go around the dia starting with Councilmember Bangston.
Thank you, Council President Harden. I do have just one announcement this evening. Just a reminder that tomorrow, my office will hold a second hearing to discuss potential changes to the Department of Development's tax incentive wage threshold policy. As a refresher, currently only jobs that pay $15 per hour or more qualify for tax incentives. During the first hearing on September 20th, the Department of Development presented data on the pay scales of jobs presently in the city's incentive portfolio, national market wage data, and a policy recommendation to increase the wage to an amount between $18.50 and $20 per hour. Tomorrow evening, we will be hearing presentations from several invited community stakeholders to get their reactions to the first hearing and their thoughts on how we should move forward, given the recommendations. I'm really excited about tomorrow's public hearing because it's not just that, but it's also going to be a very informative session with some great community stakeholders. So hopefully, folks will be able to join us and hear about living wage and other kinds of things that we hear so much about in the community. Same as last time, residents who want to provide written, in-person, or virtual testimony should email my legislative assistant JP Dorval at JB as in Boy, Dorval, D-O-R-V-A-L, at columbus.gov. Requests for in-person/virtual testimonies or written testimony should be submitted by 4:00 p.m. tomorrow. However, we will be flexible and will have speaker slips at the hearing in case. So I hope everyone can join us. Also, you can join us live on CTV, YouTube, and Facebook, and we'll be answering questions virtually as well. That is all the announcements I have this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rosa de Padilla.
Good evening, Council President. I do have one resolution and a couple announcements, so I will start with my resolution, so I see our speakers making their way. So I'd like to introduce Resolution 0211-X 2022 to recognize and celebrate the week of October 17th as Columbus City Schools Traffic Safety Week and recognize Vision Zero Columbus and Columbus City Schools for their commitment to end traffic-related fatalities in Columbus. The Vision Zero Columbus mission is to end traffic-related fatalities and serious injuries by equipping those who use the city's transportation system with knowledge and awareness to build safer habits. Whether they are driving, walking, or riding a bicycle or motorcycle, Vision Zero is creating more equitable mobility in Columbus by building a community of safe drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists. Vision Zero is helping to ensure that everyone completes a safe trip every time. October 2022 is Ohio's first-ever Ohio School Safety Month, signed into law earlier this year with the goal to increase attention towards student safety while utilizing school transportation. As part of Columbus City Schools' commitment to Vision Zero Columbus, Columbus City Schools has declared the week of October 17th as Columbus City Schools Traffic Safety Week. Teachers will incorporate traffic safety and Vision Zero Columbus messaging in the classroom curriculum and discussion, share data and information on the dangers of distracted driving, and encourage students to drive safe, walk safe, and bike safe. So to kick off our speakers, I'd like to introduce Maria Cantrell from the Department of Public Service and Vision Zero Project Lead.
Thank you so much for having us here today. Yes, my name is Maria Cantrell. And again, our goal with Vision Zero Columbus is to make sure that no lives are lost while walking, driving, or riding a bike here in the city of Columbus. So we have an action plan that we're in the process of implementing. And as part of that plan, we have street improvements that we have going on right now. We've had over 140 crosswalks that we've installed. We've seen changes on Sullivan Avenue where we've added curb extensions to help encourage safe speeds on that street and make it easier for pedestrians to cross at crosswalks. And we have done a road diet on Livingston Avenue where that's gone from four lanes to three lanes. Projects like that that help encourage safe speeds. But Vision Zero isn't just street improvements, it's outreach to our community to share the message about Vision Zero. And as part of that outreach and that critical piece, we have both the School Traffic Safety Week and also ambassadors that helped us reach the community. So they're here today to tell us a little bit about what they have going on.
Thank you. I owe the bill of my shit on the regime. It's not like a rahman or a high was the last was the last one I say it now Muhammad when I hear his hobby was the last one in the name of God, the merciful. Thank you for having us here today to share about what we did this summer. I become an ambassador for Vision Zero for many reasons. One being that I've been advocating for this forever. I'm an immigrant. I come from a country where roads are just such... We don't have safety laws like here. And then crossing just the road is a challenge for me. So I've been on this over and over, talking about it. How could it... For straight ways, I can't do this. And I ride the bus. I walk. So last year, at Mother Fall, it's a woman, single woman's, you know, a little collective. They're like, "Call this lady Catherine." You know, they're looking for ambassadors. Like, I'm all in. I didn't even know what they were doing. But this aligns so much with my faith, with is looking after one another. So just being a responsible member of the community. I am a mother of three, and I know that over 40,000 people die every year because of fatal crashes, and we can prevent those. She mentioned all the things we did to help prevent those. So my son could have been one of those 40,000. He could have been a statistic. That when I first started, that first week, I started at home. I get all my son's friends talking about he would be driving, speeding, looking at his phone, not wearing a seatbelt. But I brought the numbers, you know, seeing the numbers, seeing how many people die just because of this and following traffic laws matter. He did. He was in a very, very bad car accident. He came out with just a scratch, and a belt hit him here. He was respecting speed. He was doing everything he was supposed to do. And I decided that day I will be doing everything I can. So no mother will come and see their children die because of that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Raji.
Good evening, President Harden, and thank you, Barosa de Padilla, and members of the council. I'm Vice President Ramona Reyes of the Columbus Board of Education. And here on behalf of President Adair and our members, we're excited to celebrate with Vision Zero Columbus in October 17 in Columbus City Schools, where our teachers will incorporate traffic safety and Vision Zero Columbus messaging in the classroom curriculum and discussions, sharing data and information on the dangers of distracted driving, and encouraging children to drive safe, walk safe, and bike safe. This is perfect timing. As we all know, it's getting darker earlier. So it's really important for not only the drivers who are in our community, but also for our students to make sure that they have reflective clothing, that they're watching and looking both ways to ensure that there is not a tragedy in our community. Also in addition, on October 19, Vision Zero Columbus and WNS 10 TV Sports anchor Dom Tiberi will share traffic safety information and Maria's message at Independence High School seniors at a special assembly, so parents and educators can support safe student travel by following and reviewing school transportation safety tips. And we're asking all of our students to share what they've learned this week to ensure that all of our students have a safe trip to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? I just want to say thank you, and especially, I think incorporating this for our young people to listen to. I mean, I think that age-old adage that there are no accidents is real, right? And every time, whenever we've any been, anyone's been in a car accident because someone's not paying attention, we're not, we're distracted by something. And with all of the distractions that we have, especially having our young people on the road, that we want to give them this freedom, we want to ensure that we can all be safe, whether you're on two feet, two wheels, four, or more, that we are ensuring safety for all of our residents. So with that, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla Brown, Dorance, Remi, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. So on to two quick announcements. So first, I want to thank all of the members of the Latina Heritage Month on a successful month of activities. We close up this month this Saturday with a full house at Wild Goose Creative with over 40 Latino artists that were either performing or showing their artwork at the event. So it was great. We're super excited for next year. So thanks for all of our community members that helped to celebrate with us and elevate Latina heritage in the city of Columbus. Secondly, I would like to remind everyone that right here in council chambers on this Saturday, the 22nd, the Women's Caucus, so myself, Councilmember Favor, Pro Tem Brown, will be hosting the first-ever Columbus Girls Summit Igniting Your Political Power. So we are almost at capacity. So if you're watching this, or if you're leading, because I know we have a lot of leaders out here today that lead groups with young women between the ages of 12 to 18, please encourage them to come out, to register. You can find our information online. But we will, very excited about the strong energy that we will have and capitalizing on the energy of strong female leaders, especially our young Black and Brown leaders in the community to come together to really discuss policy and what we can be doing to address some of the issues and concerns facing our young people in the city of Columbus centered on women and young girls. So hopefully, we will see you on Saturday, and then we will share more information after the event. And that is all from me, Council President.
And you glossed over it, but I want to just say thank you to you for your leadership for the planning of Latinx Hispanic Heritage Month. It was an honor to be a part of it from council, so thank you for what you pulled together. We're very grateful. President Pro Tem.
Thank you, President Harden. I echo the congratulations on Latina Heritage Month. And I am going to take a quick point of personal privilege. Today is my daughter's seventh birthday. And so I asked her babysitter to turn on the TV. So Carolyn, I hope that you're watching. I want to tell you that seven years ago, you lit up my world. Keep shining, sweetie, and I hope you enjoyed the orange pop I left you. Love you. I had to do that because she's mad at me for missing dinner, so. That's all I have.
That is awesome. Happy birthday, Carolyn. Councilmember Dorance, sorry. Councilmember Remi.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have two resolutions and one announcement this evening. I'd like to invite Kevin Sweet to the podium as I introduce ordinance 208-X to declare October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Columbus and to recognize the Ohio State University for their advocacy and efforts to raise awareness regarding breast cancer in Columbus and central Ohio. Each year, more than 230,000 American women are diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States. It is estimated that 287,850 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women in 2022 alone, with 51,400 new cases of non-invasive breast cancer. The risk of developing breast cancer increases with age. About 80% of women diagnosed with breast cancer each year ages 45 or older, and about 43% are ages 65 or above. About 5% to 10% of breast cancers can be linked to known gene mutations inherited from one's mother or father. Mutations in the BRCA1 and BRCA2 genes are the most common. On average, women with BRCA1 mutation have up to a 72% lifetime risk of developing breast cancer. For women with BRCA2 mutation, the risk is 69%. Breast cancer that is positive for the BRCA1 or BRCA2 mutations tends to develop more often in younger women. It also includes an increased ovarian cancer risk. In men, BRCA2 mutations are associated with a lifetime breast cancer risk of about 6.8%. As of January 2022, there are more than 3.8 million with a history of breast cancer in the U.S. This includes women currently being treated and women who have finished treatment. Breast cancer is a more curable disease than it was 30 years ago due to increased awareness, improved treatment options, as well as improved mammography screenings, which helps detect breast cancer early. There have been numerous studies which have shown that early detection saves lives and increases the options for treatment. One in eight women will develop breast cancer in their lifetime. And although it's the second-most diagnosed cancer in women behind skin cancer, the five-year survival rate is more than 90% for breast cancers detected early, thanks to enhanced screening and prevention methods. Now be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize the Importance of Breast Cancer Awareness Month and salutes the Ohio State University for their continuous work to raise awareness regarding breast cancer in Columbus, central Ohio, and throughout the globe. Couple weeks ago, we talked a little bit about why I shaved my head in support of my sister-in-law who's stage-two breast cancer. We lived this life and have lived this life for the last couple of years as I've readily admitted or acknowledged my wife is BRCA1 positive. Her father's BRCA1 positive. My sister-in-law was BRCA1 positive. And my kids have a 50/50 shot of being the same. So it is important to raise awareness on the importance of screening. And so I'm very thrilled to have you here tonight, Professor Kevin Sweet with the Ohio State University of Internal Medicine, who will speak to this a little bit further. Professor Sweet, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilmember Remi and Council President Harden and other members of the council. Indeed, I'm pleased to be here to address the chambers and speak on the importance of recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As you pointed out, breast cancer is a very common disease. One in eight women develop breast cancer within their lifetime. One in three individuals develop some type of cancer. And breast cancer itself is the second-most commonly diagnosed cancer in women. The five-year survival rate has gotten much better over time. And in fact, and as you pointed out, 90% of breast cancers detected early, women do survive due to enhanced screening and prevention methods, including a lot of new individualized and personalized treatments that the James and Ohio State University has brought forward. And October is a time to celebrate the more than 3.1 million women who have been diagnosed with breast cancer and are survivors living in the U.S. today. Another important point to recognize, and as you mentioned, is most women diagnosed with breast cancer are aged 50 or over. But although mammogram starts at age 40 within the general population, women who are at higher risk, and at a count of probably 10, 15%, maybe up to 25% of women, need to be aware that potentially they need to start their screening at an earlier age. So for example, with the BRCA1 and BRCA2, the two most common hereditary causes for breast cancer, women ideally should start their breast cancer screening by age 25. So much earlier than in a general population and screen more often, maybe every six months with regard to, you know, imaging, mammogram, and breast MRI or other enhanced screening, clinical exams more often and such. Because the lifetime risk with a BRCA mutation carrier, as you noted, could be as high as 60, 70, 80%. There's increased risk for additional primary breast cancers with BRCA mutation carriers. I often see women in clinic, younger women, and in making treatment decisions, what type of surgery should I have? Going through genetic testing, and if indeed they found to have a change in mutation within a BRCA gene, can help their treatment course. Maybe they decide to have additional surgery to help lower their risk or prevent other types of cancer. Not only breast cancer, but ovarian cancer is at a much higher risk with BRCA mutation carriers. It's also important to point out that although BRCA1 and BRCA2 do account for the vast majority of hereditary cause, there are other breast cancer genes. The cost of testing also has come down tremendously over the last few years. It used to be thousands of dollars just to do testing for those two genes. Now we can do panel testing and essentially look at all the breast cancer genes. Most insurance companies recognize, given either age of diagnosis or family history, the importance of genetic testing and cover that testing. There are certain criteria people can meet, or even for $250 out of pocket, you can have complete genetic testing. So it's become more available. We could do more with genetic testing as far as actionability, steps you could take to other prevent or lower your risk for cancer. And one other thing I want to note, the Ohio State James recently developed and launched a family history tool. It's called Family Health Risk Calculator. So it's a free tool that anyone could use. Just Google Family Health Risk Calculator. You can put in your personal or family history of cancer and/or heart disease. And if it raises a red flag, like there's enough there to warrant referral for genetic counseling and testing, please talk to your doctor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Professor Sweet. We really appreciate you coming down tonight and sharing a little bit more information about this. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments this evening? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla Brown, Dorance, Remi, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next, I'd like to invite Reynoldsburg City Councilmember Buwan Pikkarol and guest to the podium as I introduce 209-X 2022 to recognize and celebrate October 2022 as Hindu Heritage Month in the city of Columbus. Hinduism is the third-largest religion in the world with more than 1 billion followers worldwide and 4 million in the United States. During the month of October, the culture, history, traditions, and achievements of Hindus are recognized and celebrated throughout the United States. Hindu-Americans have made numerous positive contributions in all aspects of society, from science and business to politics and spirituality. Columbus's vibrant Hindu-American community has contributed tremendously to the vitality of the success of the city and enrich the lives of its residents. Hindus strive to live by Dharma, which is a code of living that emphasizes good conduct, morality, and acceptance of all and living in harmony with nature. During the month of October 2022, the Hindu-American community will collectively celebrate its heritage by focusing on its culture and diverse spiritual traditions rooted in India. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize and celebrate October 22 as Hindu Heritage Month in the city of Columbus and appreciate the social, economic, and artistic contributions of the Hindu-American community. I want to thank you, Councilmember, for coming down, joining us this evening to share a few words. Namaste.
Namaste, and thank you. Thank you very much. This is very, very important for all of us. So important for me and the Bhutanese community because in the year 1990, we were forced out of our country of birth by the dictator, the King Abutan. One of the main reason was our faith, the Hindu Dharma. Today, coming into the United States and recognizing that special day, it's much more than anything that I had ever expected in my life. Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you, President Harden, and thank all the councils for doing these things. On the behalf of Hindu-Americans and the Bhutanese Hindu community, I'd like to thank for recognizing this day. And also, we are ever grateful for all of you and for this nation for giving us a second chance and recognizing this very important day. Thank you. And I'd like to call Ms. Durga Khairala to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Buwan Pikkarol too. Respected Council President, Councilmen, my community members, and all. Today, I'm so honored to take this privilege to represent my community and speak on Hindu Heritage Proclamation. My name is Durga Khairala Mishra. I am from Reynoldsburg, Ohio. I am a Vaidic Human Empowerment Coordinator representing global Bhutanese Hindu organization, ZBHO. Recently, ZBHO was able to purchase 150-acre land in Galen City, Ohio, with the aim of to preserve our culture and pass our culture... to preserve our culture and pass our culture to our generation and generation. With the Bhutanish population in USA, where the citizens of Bhutan, who were evicted from the country due to ethnic cleansing and religious persecution. The Black days of Bhutan, Bhutanish, Hindu still reflects praise, which gives us immense pain and very low esteem life experience that we underwent. Our religious teaches us many principles, and among them, regardless indifference in religions, culture, language, and tradition, we treat everyone in our community as our own community member, our family member. USA welcomed and welcoming immigrants with cultural diversity. Tonight, it has been proven that the principle of our religion is being recognized and acknowledged. We greatly value and respect unity in diversity and love to work with every individual in the community to create a peaceful, harmonious, and well-connected community. Lastly, I'd like to thank City of Columbus for this great initiative, respect, and identification of our rich cultural values. Thank you, and thank you all.
Thank you much. I know we've been neighbors and part of the community. I have as Northland Community Council President since about 2010. So it's been a long journey, but it is so great to see all of you down here today and having the opportunity to honor you in this month. So are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Council President?
Thank you, Councilmember, and again, welcome and happy, as we celebrate. Just wanted to acknowledge that later this month, council will be, for the first time, holding a celebration of Diwali in council chambers. We have taken to making sure that this room in particular, call it the city's living room, this is the place where we gather as a community, and we want folks to feel comfortable in this space regardless of where you come from, if you were born here or not. If you are a resident of this city, then this is your space. And so we changed the way it looks for the evening, and on that evening, on I think the 26th, we'll be celebrating Diwali right here in council chambers. So we're so grateful for you for taking the space, and we're taking the time to acknowledge the important role that we play in our community. So thank you so much, and as we celebrate this important month.
Thank you very much. If there are no further comments, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barroso de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reemi, President Harden.
Adopted.
Finally, I have one announcement this evening. The City of Columbus and Axon's Community Impact Team are partnering to co-host an event series called Share the Table on Columbus's newest body-worn camera program. These events will create space for community members to learn about the latest technology, come into Columbus, and engage in thoughtful dialogue on public safety technology. These events will occur on Thursday, October 27th, from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Grange Insurance Audubon Center, and Tuesday, November 1st, from 11:00 to 2:00 at the Boathouse. To learn more about these upcoming events or get the RSVP link, please email my legislative assistant, lucyfrank@colombus.gov. That's ljfrank@colombus.gov. Thank you, Council President. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Just one little bit of cleanup first. There was a speaker on ordinance 0211-X-2022 on Safe Routs to Work Week for Columbus City Schools. We're going to call them up now. Ms. Ginger Torres is here. Ms. Ginger, we apologize for moving past you, but we want to give you the opportunity to speak on this important ordinance as we recognize the safety around our schools.
Thank you so much. Councilmembers, Mayor, I wanted to, my name is Ginger Tornez, and I represent friends and families for Safe Streets Columbus, which we formed a few years ago after a unfortunate death of a dear friend of ours to a hit-and-run driver who was a legacy marathon runner, and the driver left her, hit her, and then left her to die. So we, that's when we, out of our anger and grief, we heard about, we researched and found out about Vision Zero, and we are so happy that and grateful that you all have adopted it in March of 2020. So as a result, I am here to support Councilmember Barroso de Padilla's Resolution 0211-2022, incorporating Vision Zero messaging into classroom content, because it needs to be a multi-pronged approach to truly implement safe system strategy. And as you probably well know, unfortunately, the traffic fatalities for Columbus have gone up since the adoption of Vision Zero, 14% to be exact. And so although we're making good progress, much more needs to be done. As for so long, too long, our predecessors prioritized moving cars at the expense of, quickly, at the expense of everyone else. So anyway, with endless stories of lives ruined and or never fully realized because of the deaths, injuries, and lifelong disabilities suffered from traffic crashes. In addition, we are experiencing an economic and societal impact of approximately 871 billion nationally on an annual basis. So as far as we're concerned, no Safe Streets project is too expensive to implement. It's, in fact, it's a moral imperative. So thank you for having me.
And thank you so much for your advocacy. Thank you for taking time to be here this evening, Councilmember.
Ginger, I was just going to say, thank you for, I know we moved a little quickly. I'm glad you had the opportunity to speak this evening, and thank you for your continued advocacy. I always feel like with every effort, there's always more that feels like we couldn't be doing, right? And we're just getting started. This is phase one of the project, as you know. We're going into phase two. Director Gallagher, I see you shaking your head. I know that Maria had to leave, but it's going to take all of us coming together, and it is a change for people, and it is hard for people in a world where I feel like, even as we sit here, many times we multitask, right? And so in that world of multitasking, when you are operating a vehicle, when you're moving about the streets, really being singularly focused is hard for us as humans. And so how do we reorient that and reorient systems to ensure the safety of our residents is a moral imperative for us. And so thank you for your continued advocacy. We look forward to continuing to work with you on this to ensure that one day we really do reach the vision of zero fatalities in the City of Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now I could have the honor of recognizing an organization and folks who have created this organization in our city. One of the things I love about Columbus is that, is that we're intentional about developing leaders. And one of those programs that has played an amazing role in creating strong, diverse leadership in this city is the African-American Leadership Academy. So at this time, I'd like to invite up the leaders of that, Ms. Donna, and Larry James, and Mo Wright. And then we thought, they just had a class graduate, and so we wanted to invite the most recent graduates who have previously or currently worked for the City of Columbus to come forward as well, as we recognize and we talk about this important program that literally is developing the leaders of our city today and tomorrow. Like I said, there are so many folks, even on this diest, that have come through this academy. Councilmember Faver and Councilmember Bangston, our deputy clerk, Toya Johnson, just to name a few, are all graduates of this program. And we wanted to take a moment to recognize, I mean, we want to be intentional too in acknowledging and celebrating the folks who have gone through that program. I'm looking out in the directors. Have directors gone through? Okay, Ms. Nikki was like, yeah, me too.
We got one back there.
Director Brandon has gone through? Anybody else? But we wanted to recognize this current graduating class and give time to tell the public about this amazing program and what it is about. And so that I'll turn it over to Mo.
Thank you, President Harden, members of council. It is so good to be here. 18 years ago, the folks to my left, along with Donna and Larry James, along with names like Yvette McGee Brown and Janet Jackson, came together because, quite frankly, they were getting called too often. When folks were looking for African-American leadership in this community, they called the same number of people, and they started to talk about, there is more talent in our community that's being recognized. And so how do we get intentional about developing and exposing and making sure they have the skills to navigate leadership in this community? And 18 years later, we are 300-plus strong in this community, and many of you are in the room, they work on your staffs, they work in your companies and organizations. But the work of the African-American Leadership Academy really is grounded in this notion of how do we develop leaders from a cultural-based perspective? It's one thing to be a leader and do all the things that it takes to do that well. It's another thing to navigate that from an African-American perspective. And so we marry those two concepts. We spent about 10 months in a fellowship experience, taking leaders through all of the learning it takes to really have strategies, real strategies to navigate. We're unlike other programs because for about 10 months in your life, you are the project. We don't focus on servicing other people. We get real deep about you as an individual leader and how it is you show up and how it is your leadership can be sharpened. And what you see is a who's who from, as you said, your colleagues here on council, the president of our school board, they're in corporate rooms and boardrooms all across the city, providing high-level leadership. But it really comes down to how do we get intentional about leadership development in a real way? And so we're just thankful to our founders for having this vision, and as you can see, so many young leaders and those who are seasoned as well come together in the academy to create a 10-month learning laboratory to get better, but to do it together. And so part of it is about sense of community. But our guiding principle is one that says, you know, how do we get you to do well so you can do more good in the community? And that's really what this is all about for us. And so just on behalf, again, for these graduates, we say congratulations. They are already getting it done, but it's so important. The last thing I'll say is what we know is about African-American leaders is, too often, we don't get tapped for opportunities. And if you're in a corporate organization or you're serving in an individual leadership role, sometimes we don't get tapped to take on leadership development opportunities. And so we're very grateful to our sponsors who make the program at no cost to our participants, which means that money is not a barrier for them getting the kind of leadership development they really need, and that makes all the difference. So thank you to all of those who support us throughout this community to make this vision of the African-American Leadership Academy real, alive, and well. And so to the 300-plus fellows that I get a chance to work with each and every day, job well done, and let's keep getting it done.
Thank you, Council President Harden and the other council members. It is a pleasure to be here. This is very unexpected because we've been quietly doing our work, and we kind of prefer to do it that way. And it's also humbling to see the fruits of that labor over 18 years of working. The one thing I will add, and the folks behind me know this, we're not a clique. This isn't a club. This is about developing individuals so they can continue to be a catalyst in our community for good. And it's a calling upon them to level up, and that's exactly what they are doing, and doing it collectively, but for the benefit of our community. So thank you for this opportunity to be recognized.
Thank you, President Harden and members of council. Donna and Mo and I have been talking over the last couple of days. We had an extraordinary experience over a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things we're going to challenge the academy to do is, what does it mean to be black or African-American? What obligations are imposed upon you as that? So the idea that was initially asked is why? And what I said to the fellows is, if you get to know each other, and you like each other, and you trust each other, you will help each other, and we won't have the friction that we've seen. But the thing that we're going to embark on, at least from my perspective going forward, is what does that mean to be black? Does that mean helping your family? Yes. Does that mean helping your community? Absolutely. And if we can bring those synergies together, and we can understand what the challenges are before us, and we can put that camaraderie and that brotherhood and sisterhood together, we're even going to move it to a much higher level. So thank you. Lastly, someone said, you know, why did you initially start this? And there was a point that if you had put a gun to my head and said, name me 10 lawyers under the age of, black lawyers under the age of 35, I couldn't do it. Age and success isolates you, and you become not relevant. So how do we continue to grab each other's hand, to lock arms, and move forward? Thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you. And with leaders like Donna and Larry and leadership with Mo Wright and others, you can see that these 300 folks that are serving our community now are really pouring back, and we have huge shoulders to stand on. Can we have the folks from the city, just give us your name and department you represented, or what part of the city?
Stanley Gates, Class 19, Director of Community Engagement for Columbus City Council.
Nia Walters, Class 19, In-House Counsel to Columbus City Council and Legal Analyst in the Legislative Research Office.
Derek Anderson, V, Class of 18, and with the Department of Public Utilities Assistant Director.
Chris Sewell, work for Meta. Formerly, though. Formerly Facebook, and also had opportunity to serve Mayor Ginter as an Assistant Director of External Affairs.
Awesome.
Brandon Chapman, formerly Columbus Public Health.
Tanisha Harden, formerly Legislative Aid to Councilmember Faver, and currently the Emerging Developers Accelerator Program Director at the Affordable Housing Trust.
I probably should turn it over to the other graduate. I don't know what cohort, but Councilor Bangston.
Well, you know, we're not, we're going to be decorum and not talk about whose class was the best class, but I was in Cycle 11, just so everyone knows. But so honored to have you all here and to recognize you all. This is an amazing program and truly changed my life. And I think what's unique about it, and you heard them, but I really want to underscore this, that it is a leadership academy that is not simply about self or about advancing your career, although that is what you will do when you come out of it. But it is all about developing the community along the way. And there are so many folks in this community that have gone through it, and they walk around with that spirit, that we are not a clique, but we are a catalyst, a catalyst for someone else that come behind us and to make sure that we are building a stronger and more diverse community. You all have heard me say it before, and I'll say it again, diversity, equity, and inclusion is nothing without intentionality. And this is a way of us being intentional. So thank you, Larry. Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Mo, for advancing this and taking it to the next level, and I'm so excited to see what's going to happen and see the continued progress that we make collectively here in the City of Columbus. But thank you all so much. And again, if you need a reminder, Cycle 11 was the best cycle, so just saying.
Councilmember Barroso de Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. Well, I wanted to take a second to say, you know, it's interesting because Mo Wright was actually, he was one of my first teachers, continues to be a teacher of mine, because I was part of Project Diversity. And interestingly enough, I've never been able to share this with the James, but Project Diversity was actually, or I'm sorry, AALA was actually an inspiration for the Latina Mentoring Academy, and the idea that if we each do work in our own community, right? If we're centered on who we are and our identity and do work that is culturally relevant for who we are, meeting people where they are, and then giving them opportunities and a platform, you can see that you are giving people a platform for their own greatness that they innately have inside of each and every one of them. So that was an unintended consequence that y'all probably started when you started AALA, but the fact that now we have other organizations that you essentially gave permission to, to create space and take up space so that we could do the same sort of work, so that together we could uplift each other and uplift other leaders that don't always have the same sort of opportunities is incredibly important. I mean, and as you see today at this council, we had refugees, we had immigrants, we've had folks who have been here, we've had leaders from the black community. This is Columbus. This is the best of us. And so I just want to thank you for continuing to be those role models and those leaders and giving other communities space and... and giving other communities space and, you know, I hate to say permission, but it's the words that's coming to me right now, to be able to do the same sort of thing. So thank you.
Now, last and certainly not least, as Council President, I have the ability, I get to work with our HR director, and every so often you hear about an employee that has met a milestone, and you get a pin. So for five years, you get a pin, for ten years, you get a pin, for fifteen years, you get a pin, and so on and so on. And normally, you know, you get the pin without much ado. But then last week, one came across my desk for someone at city council who has served more than thirty-five years. And so we thought that that was worth pausing for. And I know that they have served more than thirty-five years because if I would have been more thoughtful, there was a, there's a picture of my baby shower, the baby shower when I was born, where this person was there, working for the city, working for city council. And I'm thirty-five years old, so it's definitely been more than thirty-five years. But on behalf of a grateful city, and certainly on behalf of a grateful council, we want to recognize our own clerk, Angie Blevins, for more than thirty-five years of service to the city of Columbus. Madam Clerk, would you like to say anything? She loves attention. She loves to be, you know, speeches and all that, so I said... Well, thank you. Any council members, probably? Please.
I just want to add my thanks, clerk, and congratulations. And like, we all have more peace of mind because you exist. I know that I especially felt that as a brand-new council member, but I feel it every day, even in my, what is it, seventh year on this stage. So just thank you for your dedication and wisdom and being you.
Thank you. Congratulations, clerk. Thank you so much for your service. All right. Are there any requests by members of council for the, actually, are there any comments from our elected colleagues? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive the reading of titles of thirty-day legislation on tonight's agenda? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you. Well, the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of thirty-day legislation on tonight's agenda.
Economic Development Committee, Resolution 196X-2022, ordinances 2648, 2748-2022. Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinances 2706, 2718-2022. Technology Committee, ordinances 2686, 2759-2022. Finance Committee, ordinances 2592, 2600, 2666, 2762-2022. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 2291-2022. Public Utilities Committee, ordinances 2599, 2602, 2642, 2671, 2690, and 2735-2022. Housing Committee, ordinances 2672, 2678, 2679, 2680-2022. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 2769-2022. Public Safety Committee, ordinance 2557-2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't see any speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 206X, 212X, 210X, and 207X-2022. Economic Development Committee, Resolution 197X-2022, ordinances 2667, 2668-2022. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 2549, 2692, 2705, 2760-2022. Neighborhoods and Immigrant Refugee and Migrant Affairs Committee, ordinance 2850-2022. Finance Committee, ordinances 2465, 2661, 2754, and 2755-2022. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 2457, 2462-2022. Education Committee, ordinance 2676-2022. Public Utilities Committee, Resolution 181X-2022, ordinances 2583, 2589, 2601, 2607, 2726-2022. Workforce Development Committee, ordinance 2767-2022. Building and Zoning Policy Committee, ordinances 2377, 2647-2022. Housing Committee, ordinances 2722, 2724, 2739, 2779-2022. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinance 2675-2022. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinances 2350, 2658, 2660, 2707-2022. Administration Committee, ordinances 2787 and 2844-2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda. Mr. Nate Wilkins is speaking in support of ordinance 2739-2022. Welcome to council, Nate.
Sixteen twelve Arlington Avenue, Mr. Lieutenant George Wilkins. I do believe, to my knowledge of Maynard, twelve forty-three, Maynard Drive, I believe those are two separate addresses, but I don't know the other one. But it seems like we are back at the table again with the land bank, probably with the Community Investment Corporation. I believe this probably was taken through the city land bank of August twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen. And again, even though the house was torn down, I believe it was the two-unit complex at the time, put it off the Franklin County Artist's website. But again, if we are going to take these properties, tear them down, take them out the land bank, we want affordable housing to be built, the same house that was built there before. We're talking about a flat unit here, BBA, two separate apartments on each side. But again, this property was taken through the land bank of August twenty-seventh, two thousand, no, two thousand nineteen. And again, as I put it up on the Franklin County Artist's website today, I believe that property is not still standing. I believe that property was torn down. But again, we want affordable housing. The existing of that property, we're also leaving out multi-disability people, there's multi-handicapped, visually impaired, hearing impaired. And if we are going to do something with these lands, we want to do something with them right now to bring more people opportunity. Every time I come up here, my wife is sitting back there, and so, like I said, we want more opportunity for the visually impaired and multi-handicapped. I want to say thank you for sending it harder for the class or Nicholas Banks, but this is what we need now, did anything. My wife is sitting back there, and so if we are going to look at something like this, we want to look at something that's more opportunity for all type of people in here, you know, all type of people through the city of Ohio. And this is what I don't see a lot of times, multi-disability people looking for places that's something that's really affordable. You know, we want something that's ground-level, that's multi-handicapped, and more accessibility, and also security cameras around. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for your continued advocacy. We appreciate you, and thank you for supporting this ordinance as well. Are there any other questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion of approval? Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bankston?
Yes.
Ms. Burrosa de Padilla? Ms. Brown?
Yes, with the exception of twenty-six forty-seven-2022, on which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Dorance? Ms. Remy? President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance is passed with the noted exceptions. We'll now proceed with the second reading of thirty-day postponed emergency legislation. First committee to come before council is the Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Bankston, Councilmember Flores.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in the Technology Committee for second reading, we have ordinance two seven zero nine-2022 to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to modify an existing contract with Trang Products LLC, doing business as TP Resources on behalf of the Department of Public Services for enhancements to its pavement assessment work limit system, or PALS 2.0. Phase two, to waive relevant sections of Columbus City Codes pertaining to competitive bidding, to authorize the expenditure of five hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars from the operating budget of the Street Construction Maintenance Fund in the Department of Public Service, Division of Transportation Design and Construction, and to declare an emergency. This purchase adds further functionalities to newly-developed software used to manage the design of the Columbus resurfacing and other right-of-way maintenance programs. This modification will add five hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars to the existing contract, bringing the aggregate contract total to one million two hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. This ordinance is requesting a waiver of competitive bidding since the bidding, since bidding this out at this time would slow down the project considerably, and also that this is an extension, adding, I mean, contract modification, not entering into a new contract. Emergency action is also requested to avoid service interruptions and to also ensure that a purchase order is established as soon as possible. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
And that is all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next committee to come before council is the Finance Committee chaired by President Proton. President Proton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in finance, we have ordinance twenty-seven thirty-two-2022. This resolution is, this ordinance is subject to Charter Section forty-four, one B, to authorize the issuance of limited tax bond anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed twenty-four million, three hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of financing the costs of constructing the Starling Street parking garage, to authorize the appropriation of one million, five hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-four cents in the Columbus Downtown Tiff Fund, Fund four four five three, to authorize the transfer of one million, five hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-four cents from the Columbus Downtown Tiff Fund to the Mobility Debt Retirement Fund, to authorize the transfer of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars and eighty-two cents within the Mobility Debt Retirement Fund, to authorize an expenditure of twenty-seven million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars from the Mobility Enterprise Fund and Mobility Debt Retirement collectively, and to declare an emergency. Historically, the city has invested in the construction of parking garages as they are a positive revenue source for the city. This ordinance includes an additional forty thousand dollars to cover the cost of advertising, printing, and legal services, as well as other incidentals associated with the construction. Additional funds will be used to pay down a portion of the existing note from the Downtown Tiff and the Mobility Enterprise Fund. The intention is that debt service associated with the issuance of these notes will come from revenues generated from the operation of the city's existing parking garages and future revenues generated from the Starling Street parking garage. Madam Auditor, would you like to share anything about how these investments support our city's financial outlook?
Sure. Council President Harden, Finance Chair Brown, and members of council, Chair Brown, you did a good job, very good job with the history. These notes were issued three years ago to finance the Starling Street garage, which is in the Sado Peninsula. That garage, you know, how these notes work is, as revenues are received, either through the garage itself or through the other sources you mentioned, like the Downtown Tiff and Assessment, those notes are paid down. And so they were rolled last year, and then they are being rolled again, meaning rolled, meaning renewed. So it went from, I believe, the first issuance was thirty-two and a half million. The present issuance, thanks to all of that paid down, is twenty-four point three million. Those notes are intentionally held in short-term format because as soon as those revenues are received from the parking garage itself, we pay that principal down. And it is held by the Treasury Investment Board for that reason. So thank you. Any questions, happy to take.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We need to now go back to first reading, Utilities Committee. In first reading, Councilmember Dorance has the ordinance, Councilmember.
Thank you, Council President. That is correct. I believe on page six of our agenda, we have an item from first reading for the Public Utilities Committee that is ordinance two seven three five-2022 to authorize the Director of Public, Department of Public Utilities to execute those documents necessary to release and terminate a portion of the city's utility easement rights reserved, inscribed, and recorded in instrument number two zero one six zero five one seven zero zero six one nine five six, recorder office, Franklin County, Ohio. The city possesses title to our perpetual utility easement that burdens real property located in the vicinity of Nationwide Boulevard, currently owned by Confluence Development LLC. The Department of Public Utilities has reviewed a request by the owners of the servient estate to release certain portions of the existing easement, and determined that those portions are no longer needed and that terminating the city's rights to the easement does not adversely affect the city and should be granted at no monetary cost. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to waive second reading by a voice vote.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bankston?
Yes.
Ms. Burrosa de Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Ms. Remy? President Harden?
Yes.
Thank you. And now I move for passage by voice.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bankston?
Yes.
Ms. Burrosa de Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Ms. Remy? President Harden?
Yes. Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Final committee to come before council is the Rules and Reference Committee. I'm chair, but Councilmember Remy has the ordinance in the committee?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you, Council President Harden. I have one item in the Rules and Reference Committee this evening, ordinance sixteen fifty-two, twenty twenty-two, to enact and amend various chapters of the Title Twenty-Five Fire Prevention Code of the Columbus City Codes to ensure alignment with the Ohio Fire Code, establish an appeals process for the review of violations, and establish a new fee structure to certain permits, inspections, modifications, and rates. This ordinance enacts, amends, and repeals Columbus City Codes to provide for changes in Title Twenty-Five Fire Prevention Code to ensure it aligns with the Ohio Fire Code, allowing the Division of Fire to remain in compliance. The Division of Fire is required to adopt a fire code that ensures it's consistently updated to maintain its designation as an accredited agency through the Center for Public Safety Excellence. This amendment sets forth in this ordinance are intended to align the numbering system with the Columbus City Code, with the system utilized in the Ohio Fire Code, which is the basis for the Title Twenty-Five of the Columbus City Code, establish a framework to include future updates to the OFC, ensure Title Twenty-Five aligns with the provisions included in the most up-to-date versions of the OFC, and grants the Division of Fire authority to enforce those provisions, establish an appeals process for the Division of Fire to review citations issued for violation of this, any section of Title Twenty-Five of the Columbus City Code, require crowd managers for gatherings exceeding a thousand people to complete the prerequisite training, a process for ordering a fire watch and publish a fee schedule for permits, inspections, modifications, and rates, sets for state storage requirements for outdoor storage and pallets at manufacturing and recycling facilities, establishes new operational and construction permits, increases the safety inspection requirements for food trucks and facilities using outside grills and natural gas fire pits, support the established high-rise safety and Knox Box programs facilitated by the Division of Fire. Deputy Director speaks. Do you have any additional comments you'd like to share about this?
Chairman, Remy, President Harden, members of council, I would just like to say that this update and alignment will benefit our builders, our landlords, our event organizers. It will increase overall public safety. This was an enormous and, quite frankly, a laborious undertaking. Many, many hours were spent by a number of individuals, but I would especially like to give a shout-out to Assistant Chief Dave Ball and Assistant City Attorney Mike Holleran for their tremendous work and many, many hours of work on this important project. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. This has not been touched in years, decade, decades, really. And so, you know, getting it into an alignment and into current mode is, was a high priority. I want to thank them for their work. I did hold a public hearing on Thursday, October sixth, and was joined by Assistant Chief Dave Ball, where we went over the justification of the Fire Prevention Code update and discussed the code language. We had no public speakers, nor did we have any questions from residents who viewed the hearing virtually. So feel very good that we did the appropriate amount of outreach, and thank everybody involved with this undertaking. It was a lot, so. Are there any questions or comments? Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seeing no further business coming for counsel, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Remy, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We have a few non-agenda speakers.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal?
Sir.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Are there any additions or journals, additions or corrections to the Journal? Seeing none, the Journal is approved. We'll now go to the zoning committee. All members served on the committee, councilmember Dorance chairs the committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Before beginning tonight's zoning agenda, allowed me to briefly explain our current rules pertaining to speaking before council on rezoning and variances. We only hear a staff presentation for ordinances that have a disapproval from a recommending body, or if you have a public speaker signed up to speak against an ordinance. We do have several public speakers this evening. As a reminder, all speakers on council variances, including city staff, area commissions, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of an area commission and applicants are always able to speak in an ordinance and do not have to fill out a speaker slip. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, I will now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer the pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Kelsey Preby from the Department of Building and Zoning Services and Dan Bleschman from the Department of Public Service have been sworn in. First, we have rezoning 0847-2022 to rezone 782 and 744 North Wilson Road, being 1,436 plus acres located on the east side of the North Wilson Road, 530-plus feet south of Lowell Drive, from LC2 Limited Commercial District, LC4 Limited Commercial District, LM Manufacturing District, and R Rural District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Gilken Gold Development LLC, care of Andrew Reichelin. Proposed use is a fuel sales, convenience store, and eating and drinking establishment and future office development. City's department recommendation is disapproval. The development commission recommendation is approval, 5-0. Greater Hilltop Area Commission recommendation is approval, 12-03. Due to the department's disapproval, we will now hear a staff presentation. Ms. Preby, the floor is yours.
Council President Harden, members of council. The 14.36 acre site consists of six parcels in the LC4, LM, LC2, and R districts. The requested CPD Commercial Plan Development District will permit a fuel sales, convenience store, and eating and drinking establishment in Subarea A, and future office commercial use in Subarea B. The site is located within the planning boundaries of the Hilltop Land Use Plan, which recommends employment center and open space land uses at this location. Additionally, the plan includes adoption of Columbus Citywide Planning Policies Design Guidelines. Planning Division staff acknowledges the inclusion of an office component with this development, but the predominant proposed use is fuel sales and convenience retail, which is inconsistent with the employment center recommendation of the Hilltop Land Use Plan, and is therefore not supported. Staff does support the proposed site plan, noting that it's consistent with C2P2 design guidelines, including expanded tree preservation areas to the site's southern edge, landscaping and tree trees along the North Wilson Road frontage to provide parking lot screening from the roadway, and additional landscaping in the site's northeast corner around Blaulditch. City Department's recommendation is for disapproval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, Michael Aigs, for the department at this time?
Seeing none, I would move to our two public speakers that are here with us this evening from the Greater Hilltop Area Commission. The first speaker I have is Chair Rachel Wenning. Chair Wenning?
Chair, thanks for being here tonight, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm really just here to speak in favor of the approval of the application, sorry, which the Greater Hilltop Area Commission did vote in favor of unanimously. Initially, the development commission did split their votes on the application and advised against the approval, but after rehearing where Mr. Barnacle and myself, who are the co-chairs of zoning, were able to testify and kind of give some background and indicate that we didn't have any negative feedback from neighbors, and kind of discuss the Hilltop Land Use Plan, how that came about, and why we think that this does fit in the area, then we were able to have the commission vote in favor, which was great. And so, we are happy to see this application come before council now, after a lot of work from a lot of people, especially from Mr. Richlin, and we are also hopefully looking forward to the support of council on this matter. Also wanted to thank councilmember Dorance's office, particularly Mr. McCain, for helping the area commission in our support of this application. Again, it's just been kind of a long process, and we are very hopeful that this will be a positive addition to the Hilltop. Right now, as these parcels sit, it's just empty land and one parcel that's kind of a junkyard, scrapyard, that's not in conformance with zoning to begin with, so we're looking forward to seeing something positive in this area.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Chair Wenning? Seeing none, I would ask Commissioner Patrick Barnacle, who's our next public speaker, to come to the podium. Commissioner, thank you for being here. Welcome to council.
Thank you. Zoning co-chair Patrick Barnacle, Greater Hilltop Area Commission, may please the council. This application passed unanimously before the Greater Hilltop Area Commission. The three abstentions that are noted in the application were all absences, so everybody present actually voted completely in favor. Although we have plenty of gas stations in the Hilltop, particularly on West Broad, we do not have anything that is well-designed within the Greater Hilltop boundaries that is going to service the neighborhood to the heightened design standards that we normally get out of sheets. Additionally, this is going to provide late-night food options for second shift workers. In my opinion, this is going to be greatly supportive of other employment uses that are present on West Broad, and, sorry, and also on North Wilson Road. I would like to note that although this corridor is designated by the city as being an employment center, its presence on North Wilson Road makes it very conveniently located next to 670 and 70. It is also primarily used by people who live on the Hilltop as a through corridor to get to those highways. As its highway-through corridor presence, we think that a gas station on North Wilson Road designed to this heightened standard is going to be of positive value to the Hilltop. Furthermore, this is going to displace an undesirable existing use. There is a small junkyard currently on the property, and it would be of benefit to the neighbors that no longer is there. Furthermore, these plots are partially designated M1. There are uses that would not require a variance or to come before the city council that would be far more disruptive to some of the nearby residences, and we took great pains at the commission and zoning committee level to make sure that the neighborhood residences were screened off from the use that would be on the property. The additional trees that are in the northeast corner in particular, that whole row of trees was a area commission request to make sure that the residents that live right behind the parcel are not going to be disturbed. That, I feel, is key to making sure that this is passed. The fact that they put that in, and the planners and designers have been so cooperative with the area commission, given us pretty much everything that we asked for, I think this is going to be a good addition for the Hilltop, and I really would urge the city council to support.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do any colleagues have any questions for Commissioner Barnacle? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Want to pause and see if the applicant has anything that they'd like to add at this time? Seeing the head shake in the back of the crowd. So at this point, you know, it is unusual for council to bring these rezoning requests forward if, in fact, city department remains at disapproval. However, after additional discussion with the Hilltop Area Commission, certainly the approval from the development commission, sort of looking holistically at the property itself, the main distinction here is between whether or not this project should move forward or whether or not that property should be preserved as property for a future job center. There's not currently anything that has been proposed at that site. There's no inkling that anything will be coming anytime soon. As both of our speakers mentioned, that there is a bit of a public nuisance that is currently on the property, which would go away based upon this development happening. So at this point, unless my colleagues have any questions or comments at this point, would move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Want to thank both of our commissioners that came down this evening on that rezoning as well. Next, we have rezoning 2651-2022 to rezone 1138 Chambers Road, being 1.90-plus acres located in the north side of Chambers Road, 800-plus west, plus feet west of Kenny Road from R Rural District, the LM Limited Manufacturing District, the AR3 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Preferred Living, care of David Hodge, attorney, proposed use of the mixed-use development. City's department recommendation is approval. Development commission's recommendation is approval. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission's recommendation is also approval. Do any colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have rezoning 2708-2022 to rezone 931 Hilliard and Rome Road, being 1.62-plus acres located in the northwest corner of Hilliard and Rome Road, and Hilliard and Rome Road East from R Rural District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is TPA Ventures LLC, care of Jeb Breeze and Don Plank. Proposed uses industrial uses. City's department recommendation is approval. Development commission recommendation is approval, 6-0. Far West Side Area Commission's recommendation is also approval. Unless any of my colleagues have any questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Now we move into the variances portion of the agenda. First, we have variance 2531-2022 to grant variance from the provisions of Section 3332.037 R2F Residential District 3312.49C. Mem. number of parking spaces required 3321.01, dumpster area 3332.18, deep basis of computing area 3332.21, building line 3332.25. Maximum side yard required 3332.26, minimum side yard permitted of Columbus City Codes for the property located at 595 South Third Street to permit office, eating and drinking establishment, and outdoor dining uses with reduced development standards in the R2F Residential District under appeal. Ordinance number 1844-98 passed July 7, 1998. The applicant is Cameron Mitchell Restaurants, care of David Hodge, attorney, and proposed use as an eating and drinking establishment with an outdoor patio. City's department recommendation is approval. The German Village Commission recommendation is also approval. Do any colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And finally, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have variance 2654-2022 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3333.03 AR3 Apartment Residential District use, 3309.14 height district, 3312.25 maneuvering, 3312.29 parking spaces, 3312.49A1. Mem. number of parking spaces required 3333.15C, basis of computing area 3333.18 building lines, and 3333.24 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes. The property located at 1138 Chambers Road, permitted mixed-use development with reduced development standards in the AR3 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Preferred Living, care of David Hodge, attorney, proposed use as a mixed-use development. City's department recommendation is approval. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission recommendation is also approval. Unless there's any questions or comments from my colleague, I will first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Accepted.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Adopted.
Uh...
Amended.
Thank you. Well, I now move to amend estimate of the clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Now amended.
Thank you. Now I move for passage as amended.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Finally, we have variance 2723-2022 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3332.38H, private garage, 3332.05A4 area district lot with requirements, and 3332.38G private garage. The Columbus City Codes. Property located at 35 Sycamore Street, permit a habitable space above a detached garage with reduced development standards in the R2F Residential District. The applicant is Casey Burns and Brent Foley, Triad Architects. Proposed use of a habitable space above a detached garage. City's department recommendation is approval. The German Village Area Commission recommendation is also approval. Unless there's any questions or comments from my colleague, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. And next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Adopted.
And finally, a move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That is our zoning agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seeing no further, will you come for the zoning committee? Is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Reamy, President Harden.
Adjourn.